Everybody please silent to your phones. Let's have the pleasant legion.
Why do I think we constitute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all?
Brendan, roll call please.
Atkins.
Here.
Boswell.
Yes.
Brean.
Here.
Royals.
Here.
Cottle.
Here.
House.
Here.
Piley.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Hunt. Maynard.
Here.
Knuckles.
Here.
Could you hear me?
Yes.
This time. Good question. Start prayer one. Because we all know what problem we had last time. Start nomination now. Do it right. That's what I had on my agenda on the law out there. Door. So I took it down. So start what day one. Because Ryan, I don't want to hear. He was part of the problem last time. No room for part of the problem, I'm not an idiot. He was quick about pulling the paper. Wanted to do the last. So we start this hour. Turn. It sounds like. Right, it's the ending of term. It's happening. Second. It's reaffirming. It's all. So I know that. Why? Secret ballot point. I was involved in it. I know it's corrupt. So I'm going to correct it so I can suppress it. I'm going to start from number one. I'm going to get it all over the right. That's what's on my Jimmy, that's what you're sticking with. I know how quick two things were said. Somebody was quick about grabbing paper. That away. Third reason we should do.
My only question then is do you agree? Seeing that the office's response is not accurate? Just an.
I am a happy way was handled by certain people. So to correct that problem. Like Steve Wright, I said before. We need to do things right. Things wasn't done right last time. It's a little group thing. But I figured it out. I went home, assessed and listened to this meeting. And I remember how quick somebody said secret ballot, secret ballot. Ryan didn't have his laptop. He had the answer. Go ahead. I was sitting out there, I think when we crossed this bridge last year in meeting where I'm not sure whether it was an. It's true though. That not mistaken, Chuck. To be president until. The election took place. If I'm not mistaken, nominations were open on the second time that we had this. So I think we set precedents. Open the election back up based on what took place last year.
Will be coming back in what happened last year.
Well, I was sitting out there, but for some reason. The election started in January, but I don't think it is actually delayed until March. So there will come to a two-vote scene.
Okay. It came in January at the meeting of states.
So it's a core meeting.
So slightly, slightly.
Other than the fact that we did not have a change of presidents. Last year. So the process started over with nominations and so forth. So I think the precedence has been set.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's precedent. I would agree that. Mr. Hartman was correct. Asking the. Policy counselor. To view the situation. He is the state counselor of the policy. Twas violation. And he did, as Mr. Dawson's pointed out. He did say. You're not happy with the nomination, you just have to.
All right. Stand. I look.
Why not go through the best? Here, here, we're inviting over.
Then vote.
Let's get it done.
We're going to end up either way.
But we can say.
So, so let's break.
And I set the agenda and that's the way we're going to go. So I'll open the election.
That would be a vote then.
No, I set the agenda. I have the rights to set the agenda.
Right, but you don't have the right to change how the process is done. So we have, we have, we have illegals.
The process says we have a combination.
If you want, then ask. Ask, ask them or what they want to do. Rather than pushing it, ask.
So you're asking for nominations or what?
Yeah, I'm asking for nomination for president right now.
I'll nominate Rex.
We have second.
I'll nominate Chuck.
I'm seconding Frank's nomination. I have a second on Chuck.
Seconding Chuck.
Okay. Brendan, roll call.
Wait a minute.
Thank you.
We probably ought to have discussion of that. Whatever, I mean. Once you have nominations and you're ready to take a vote. Prior to that, should be opportunity discussion for anybody that has anything that they would like to say. You know, perhaps candidates, for example, like you tell us about their qualifications. It was pretty many of those types of things. It might be like that. In the meantime, though, before we get there, guys. This meeting. At this hour, this particular. They're problematic. I've got some people who are not making the meeting here. So. Why, why did you choose this day, Mr. Lester? I just like. Why, why were you?
Right here, right now, I had no choice though.
You had no choice.
It's this day, time.
That was your. But it is your decision. Now, you made the decision.
Because I didn't make the decision when we meet this time in this hour.
What was your?
I was looking at Thursday. Ryan told me since he was secretary. That he could make a meeting in seven.
Okay, so.
So I thought it over. And after I thought it over. I had somebody come up. Put my agenda on the door. I see my agenda was taken off the door. Because the president's set agenda.
Can't change the agenda without having three day, three business.
It was three days ahead of time. I come up, the person come up there three days ahead of time. Called you back on Monday, we can't help.
Perhaps to Mr. Boswell's original plan. We have everyone here. Shall we proceed? And, you know, if you want to ask for any comments or discussions, that's fine. So we can proceed with the vote.
I told you, because I was going to pick Thursday. Because I knew that Knuckles couldn't be here at this certain time. I know I was going to be busy today with. But I was told no.
You know, I knew. Okay. Considering the fact that we've got some new members. Who have only attended one or two meetings. I think it's important, as in most elections, that the candidates would share with us. What their, what their thoughts, platforms, agenda is, it's going to lead this. I mean, I don't think there's any secret that there's some, some heavy issues going on with this board. Sometimes it embarrasses me to be part of what's going on here. I don't want to call it the Mickey Mouse Club or the night poor thing, but, you know, I think we take that appearance sometime and I, you know, I'd like to see that cleaned up a little bit. I mean, we do represent the public here.
Perhaps if we just get on with the vote, we could do that.
Well.
Accomplish that meeting.
David, I guess what I'm asking is I'd like to hear what Chuck and Rex have in mind as leaders of this group. I think that would be reasonable for any election. I mean, I think when we go to vote for candidates in a normal election, they usually have an agenda and they share with us what their views are and.
If you want to know mine, the reason why. When I got asked last year to run. Because I thought we was corrupt. We weren't following rules. Of our APC, way things were being done. We told the commissioners, you ain't going to like certain things. We asked where that come from. We couldn't get straight answers. We weren't following our C codes. We were just out everywhere. And I told people they have their pipe room. And I told them if they were nominating, I'd make sure we get back to following our C codes, state code. And answer the question the right way the person got it. And if I know the commissioner, I will literally tell you where I got my answer from. Because I, over this last year, people have asked me. And I've been to Kyle and people ask me and I said. And I said, Kyle, I got my answer from Kyle. And I'm not going to lie here. Around the bush. And I feel like we was out, we wasn't running this meeting the way our agenda's supposed to run, way our rules supposed to be run. We was way out. And way we do things. And we need to get back to the way we run it. I know the commissioners wanted us to do something over a year ago. But way our, way our rules read, we was out of bounds. And we need to get into bounds and stay in bounds. Because like Steve Wright says, we always got to follow the rule and go right. That's what I've been trying to do over here. But I have different people. Different areas of the county. Different of those down here and trying to tell us. And this is ours, this is ours here. We have rules, it's not for them. And that's why I run. I won't plan on running again. Until somebody headed or getting front to get. Think we need to strengthen the corruptness and get it straight and run it straight line like we're forced to. That's why I asked for the election to start of day one tonight. To make sure we do a hundred percent right and that we're not back at this position again. Because if we keep doing what we did year, year, did over a year ago, we're going to be back here with all kinds of mess. That's why I run.
Chuck, can you share your thoughts with us, please?
Well, I just sat back and looked to see what was going on and seeing how the office. For lack of better words, being treated. But the way from, from the information I received, how they were communicated with, and that's not right. So that's one aspect. As far as last year and the way I ran.
What is that? What's not right?
Well, here. Um, hold on, I'll, I'll interject on this because I was stopped. Since I was going to bring this up at the next meeting, but since it's been brought up, I'll bring it up now. I was stopped at the county courthouse by an acquaintance of mine. I'll leave names out. But they came to me, asked me if I sit on this board because they thought I did. I said, yes. They said, just so you know, here's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that your employees, for lack of better words, are being verbally harassed and abused. By a member or members sitting on this board. I said, what do you mean? They proceeded to give me some examples of things that were said. Some things that have been how they're being directed to have people. There are employees. I would never tolerate. What, if, if, if what's being described to me is accurate, I would never tolerate that. And if it was an employee of mine that worked underneath me, I would have them fired. I'd do everything I could. So I'll say this. This is what I, this is what I've heard and it came from the court building, a person that works in the court building. Hold on. If I hear of it again. I'm going to make sure I publicly bring it up in a meeting. And I will go to whatever appointing agency you are and I will let them know from who appointed you, that this is how you talk to the employees. We can have differences, we can disagree back and forth, we can, we can absolutely, absolutely want to remove someone from the office, that's fine. There's level decorum and actual way you're supposed to treat employees that we shouldn't be doing. I understand things get heated. We've talked about this numerous times, the back and forth and how things are heated. I get that. But they should not get the brunt of what we're, of what we're doing.
Do we know? What might have. I don't know who it is that you're indicating has made those kinds of things. But do we know what precipitated that kind of behavior? Was there something from the other side that, that precipitated the response?
There was not, it was not that in depth. Uh, as far as, as far as that, what's what propagated it. But even then, as, as a board member, to talk to somebody in that manner, regardless of what. We should be bigger than that. We, we, we represent people.
I've heard.
So if that's, if that's the case, if that's the case.
I've heard the same thing to the contrary. So kind of as to where, yes, neither one of them.
This is true. I give you that. But if it's, if it's coming from an employee, we have man, we have other ways of dealing with that.
I understand. Go ahead.
So I'd like to give.
Answer, Chuck, I mean, Robert's question, I'll go ahead. I agree with you if individuals going up there, they should be come to the president or the executive board with their complaints. They should not be up there. And then anybody goes up there. And if it's happening, they should have come to me or the executive board. We could have the meeting because I have not heard nothing about it. I want to make that clear. Because if anything I say, I'm not afraid to speak up and tell you guys what I said up there. What's the problems I have had last year. And everything that no need to be discussed right here at this point in time. And that's why I like to answer Robert's.
Right, so I go back. Well, a lot of this boils down to the solar organs, get right to the point. Yes, the county commissioner, yes, county commissioners, they do some pre-planning and stuff like that. But they are part of the county, just like me being representative of the legislature. If I have an issue or something that I wanted to bring up and get an ordinance or something tweaked or brought before us, I would come and ask for help to get it done. The commissioners are up there, the uncorporated areas of the county, I think they would have the same full ability to do that. Bring something before us of the governing body. Okay, so they did that. They, they, this is what they would like this thing to happen. I. Being generous, and sometimes it backfires on me because I like to have as much input as possible, I invited a, the BCA. We had a meeting, a joint meeting. Get ideal. Okay, you could see that wasn't quite what the county commissioners wanted. The week after week or month after month, we had more meetings. And changes were made. And yes, I did say, well, you know, this probably isn't going to fly. This probably isn't going to fly, we need to come together and work. Every time you guys. We, as the board voted, we voted, I did vote generally in the position that you did. Every time Ryan came back the next meeting with the adjustments that you guys wanted. Every time. And we have. Draft five, six, I might be going way up to nine. Every time. Then out of the blue, that last meeting, we voted ordinance from a different county that hardly everybody, anybody reviewed. We heard about it and we passed it. You know, why I voted yes for that? Because I wanted to make sure that we got past that, send it back to the commissioners and then get the thing back down here and maybe we could work for it again. But Ryan, every meeting, am I wrong? Every meeting, he came back with the changes that we proposed. He wasn't working for the council, county officials in that time. He may have given reflection back of what they, they're saying or all the information that he gathered from all the different counties. To help us in making a logical or hopefully a good decision. So that's the way I take on the solar organs.
I ask a question.
Yes.
If you are elected.
Yes.
Would it be your intent then to. Do support. Major's ordinance that we have already in place and that sort of.
It's on the books.
I'm saying that, I'd say, no.
It's on.
Your intent to go back to the position that you.
That I, I view the president. Should be more like a moderator. If, if, as a whole, we vote that we want to do something. Then that's why I support. After this meeting, I was supposed to go stand in front of the county council and ask for money. I didn't vote for us to do that, but me, if I am elected or Rex. We gotta go and talk and, and ask, you know, we, we asked at this meeting, we voted to do this, the review. But that as a president or whatever, that is their, that person's job is to represent what the board decided.
So we are on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
At that meeting.
Seven o'clock.
Six o'clock.
So we probably.
On six o'clock, I understand, Bob, I get into that. So the fact that, you know, we may have a change of presidency.
Right.
It would be the intent for the work that had been done and the person to do represent us and so on.
Yeah.
And you're going to.
Well, I won't, I will just think of it, but if I am the one.
But that's the reason for this meeting being tonight at five o'clock so that.
Right.
I see, okay.
And Randy is going to actually speak, but Rex and I said, either way.
I like. Fire by some of the four. And he said, Ryan was doing all this, if you look at our rules and procedures. I read them enough this year. We did this sort of wrong.
Right.
And I'm not going to get detail, we did it wrong.
Rex, hold on a minute. Chuck's opportunity to present his, okay, his reading house, and he's here in this. Go ahead, Chuck.
My philosophy as far as managing, does not the micromanic. I do think you need to follow through or follow up or get updates and planning ahead or thinking of what could happen ahead, but to get in and, and the day to day nuts and bolts. Yes, it's nice to know what's going on, but as far as. Now, who unlocked the door this morning? I don't know, I mean, that's going to look strange, but. That's the office. We should have enough trust in the director to run, run the show. And support his office and then supply us with enough information. So that we can make good decisions.
Rebuttal.
Well, what I got to say about that. Long as the office follows our rules and procedure. If what I have seen this last year. In the last couple of years, I've been on here about seven years. The office don't follow our rules and procedures and bringing things back to us. Because we have certain rules, it's got to be brought back and floated through the whole membership. And they just take it, I can do what I want. I haven't been up there, no, been up there and had to correct them. I'm not, I'm sitting here, Ryan, I had to correct them. And he was warned once before, warned again, just like Robert said. So I've been told stuff by the lawyer. I pushed it up. People don't want to listen. And like Robert said. And I know, because I was talking to factories, I would have been shown the door and the door would have been smacking it up.
Can we just all agree that we all have to follow the rules, regulations and procedures? That's, that is the bottom line. We also know that there's discrepancies between our area-wide zoning ordinance and the state law. And we should be focusing as a commission. To remedy those by changing the local ordinance to conform with the state law. And, you know, I don't think there's any member on here that would say they don't want to follow the state law. I think that is an imperative.
Hey, Robert, I appreciate you bringing it up because I hope in the next meeting that I can ask or I'll make a motion that we, we make a decision to follow Indiana code until we're able to put the two of them together. I know, I know Ryan is, wants to do that, but you know, we can't play this back and.
No, no, we have no choice, the state law trumps.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm with you a hundred percent on.
Yeah, I think that's what got us into this problem we're into now is if we'd had Indiana code in front of it, if that's the one we'd have followed, we wouldn't be sitting here today. So we, you know, we got to get that cleaned up.
Yeah, and for example, that process about voting in the local ordinance. Is intended to be a revision, intended to be on next month's meeting. To get it changed to comply with the state code. I'm a hundred percent. By that.
I, I don't think we can violently think.
No, we can't.
The only thing that we've got that we probably look at is where we had tried to be more mature. Ourselves and watch state codes, because I, you know, if we look at things, our locals. Could just, whatever the state code is, that's what we are. So that's right.
Well, understand that there are some things in state codes. That. Give general laws and, and leave details up to the locals through the rules. Yeah. Yeah.
That's.
So.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, close discussion. Everyone's okay. I'm sorry. Mr. President. I'd just like to hear from both of you. This commission was put together in nineteen forty-five by the commissioners. Commissioners decided to go with an APC in our, in our county at that time. And great move, I think, you know, to have a full board to kind of take a look at everything and seeing what else going on in our county. But one of the big things in there that I read was that this board is in charge of looking at the comprehensive plan every five years. My understanding this board has looked at it, but not acted on it since nineteen ninety-seven.
We looked at it back when Larry Strange was here and I think somebody else, Niblet.
Mr. Niblet. When Mr. Niblet was here, Mr. Haylen probably would remember. That, that period of time. Mr. Niblet did a lot of work with that. And we had revised, there are several sections to it, each town has sections, et cetera. And Mr. Niblet had actually gone to several of the towns and acted all the revision. At that time, I don't know, when, two thousand fourteen, I don't, but when did Steve leave? He was doing it.
I can't remember.
When, when Steve left, he was in probation reviewing that. And some of it had been acted on and been acted on by this board, but it was being done, you know, piece meal.
But.
But a lot of it.
But officially, officially, it's nineteen ninety-seven.
Yeah, that was official.
That's to make the bypass out of your four lanes.
Yeah.
That was in that, that was in that plan.
All the time.
Okay. So I guess what I'm wanting to know out of you two. Will you do something with the comprehensive plan this year? Will we study it to see, because we've lost twenty-two thousand people in Grand Island now since nineteen ninety-seven. What are we doing? Hang on. What are we doing as this body to help? Put a, put a thumb in the dyke? Because we're losing people and by not creating jobs, by not taking a look at future things that we need to be doing, like somebody did with the four lane, the bypass and stuff. We're, to me, this body hadn't done its job. And that's, that's what I'm seeing as a member, that what we need to be doing. So I guess on record, I'd just like you to go ahead.
For you.
Okay.
We try to change it. Our, our way of just ruling the season, right, and try it. I give him credit.
He's talking about the comprehensive.
I know, but the whole, I get to that. When you, when we try to work on it, then we have the solar, that interrupts. It seems like every time we try to do something, something comes in, it takes priority. Yes, I would like to see this year if we have nothing. And the agenda that's really going to push us, take the whole night away, where we can spend a little time and keep moving forward. Yes, I agree that we should. That should be done.
I think it should be done, but I don't think we can handle it. I don't think we have the, our office is too small.
Yep.
We don't have the expertise. I think we might need to hire it out. I need to get something, we need to.
Hundred percent.
Yes, because. We do not have the time. Or the manpower or woman power to effectively and timely get it done. Now, it's probably not in our budget, but if we had something presented very well, a package, this is what we want to do. Then we probably could buy, well, we probably could buy some money. And so I don't think we, because, look, it's been since ninety-five or seven.
Ninety-seven. That's, that's not quite there.
But it hasn't been really thoroughly looked at.
It needs to be done. We don't have this brief, the timings.
Yeah, and if we want to effectively get it done.
We're going to have no problem with. It's probably time to move.
Yep.
So roll call, Brendan. Election.
I haven't quite got over the, uh, the way it went last year with the ordinance. What I've come to know is that the commissioners probably should have come into that ordinance after the APC had presented an ordinance to them for them to amend it and send it back to us. So I haven't gone over that yet. So for that reason, I'm going to vote for Rex tonight.
Both will?
Mr. Mayor.
Breedy.
Breedy.
Tyson.
There he is.
Royals.
Chuck.
Otto.
Mr. Mayor.
House.
Chuck.
Riley.
Chuck.
Dix.
Mr. Mayor.
What?
So do you want to just make the record now that Mr. Hunt has participated now on which?
Apples.
Tyson. Did you say me? Let me try to get to a better area. I'm driving home.
Who you want to vote for for president?
We come back as he gets a communication.
He was there. He just, I'm not going to focus. Con.
Breedy.
Wright.
Mr. Breedy.
Steve Tyson.
We can see you.
We just need your vote.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Right now.
Tyson.
These are numbers currently linked to the state office there.
Seven.
I'm going to call back in.
We can hear you if you can see. Try to call back in. Try to get a better connection.
Seven, five, probably makes no difference really, right? Seven, seven will be the one.
Seven for Breedy and five for Rex. There's Tyson.
There's Tyson.
Tyson, you there?
He's on the.
Dang it. All right, I got back.
Okay, who you want to vote for for president?
Can I? Dang it.
Tyson, who you want to vote for president?
It's unfortunate we don't have communication. Can I offer that we should probably just mark him as president and? I remember. Okay.
As you said, but we got her some way Tyson.
Right.
This recording. This recording.
Say right there.
All right, so we can continue on to the election of VP, but it's going to be in a situation of, we'll follow the example of what we said, and we'll have nominations.
I, I have a motion, and that is that due to the fact that the county council does meet at six o'clock, that I would move that we move the nominations and voting for vice president to the next meeting.
And Chuck.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call.
That way it's nicely, it's looking in there.
Atkins.
I agree with that.
Bofflow.
Yes.
Royals.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Dix.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Aynard.
Yes.
Bud.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
All right, so at the next meeting, one of our first things in the business will be selecting a VP.
Yes.
All right. Make commission adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All favor.
I.
I oppose. No.
I've got to move.